The following meeting is being conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, amended 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct meetings electronically during a state of emergency. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and the Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. In addition, a notice regarding this virtual meeting and instructions were published at the Asbury Park Press and the City of Asbury Park website. A copy of this notice is on file with the Board Secretary. The notices and conduct of this meeting are in accordance with the guidelines of virtual meetings issued by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Please note, all microphones of public users are muted until the public question or comment period. If you would like to speak during this time only, please use the raise hand button in Zoom if on a computer or dial *9 if on a telephone. Your last name or last, I mean, your name or your, or the last four digits of your phone number will be called when it is your turn to speak. If at any time during your question, you are deemed out of war, out of line or topic, we reserve right to mute your microphone and we'll make an announcement that this has occurred. During the public comment session, only the public will have three minutes to speak. Please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices during this meeting. Please identify yourself before you speak at all times. Please speak loudly and clearly because we have a lot of people online today. We'd like to make sure we have clarity. And this meeting is being recorded and will be available to view via AP TV. Please join me with a salute of the flag. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. I am here to cover the public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and free.
Okay, I'll call the roll call. Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
Here.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Trudy Syfax. Not here, absent. Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Eric Galipo.
Eric Galipo.
Hold on one second, please.
Did you call Alexa?
No, I did not. I didn't realize it was connected because our exercise equipment is in my office as well. So my wife must have been on the treadmill.
He called Alexis.
Yeah, I'll call it again. Alexis Taylor. I see you. Okay.
Present.
Eric Galipo.
Here.
Rick Lambert. I know he's here.
We heard you.
He's muted.
I saw him.
I see him with that cap on backwards. Rick, you gotta unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. I'm here.
Okay. Barbara Kuzak.
I'm here, President and Counterfore.
Okay.
Okay. The first item that we have that's up for discussion are the, we have two resolutions. The first one is the approval, our discussion regarding the virtual meeting rules that were giving, given to us by the Department of Community Affairs. You want to lead us into that, Jack?
Yeah, recently, DCA, a couple of weeks ago, passed some new regulations requiring us to renotice for the meetings that they're now virtual as opposed to physical as they were. When the, at the end of each year, when you renotice your entire year and two newspapers, you put down the date, time, place of the meetings. Well, now technically, date and time is good, the dates and times are good, but the meeting place is no longer at City Hall. So we're required to do that. There's some, they're rather lengthy. There's some other items in there. And I'm also awaiting some more clarification on the requirements from the Department of Community Affairs. And I know that the land use section of the State Bar Association is meeting, I think, tomorrow morning. And they're going to make some inquiries to them as well. And I'm sure we'll get some revisions and so on, and I'll keep you up to date on them. So we need to adopt that resolution regarding the rep publication, which in fact took place for both the planning and zoning boards of Asbury Park, sent and published in two newspapers, both the Asbury Park Press and the Coaster. So, okay.
All right. So Jack, are you saying that, that do we have an opportunity to comment on this? Or is this something that was given to us by the Department of Community Affairs? And this is, these are, this is what we have to follow?
Well, this is, we can understand it all. It's what we have to follow. And there's, they passed it without comments. The comment period is now begun, and I believe it lasts till sometime towards the latter part of October or into November. So I know there's a number of board attorneys and land use practitioners that have a lot of questions about the regs because there's inconsistencies and so on. So right now, we're following, we're following it to the best of our ability. And I'm hoping to get more clarification so that I can advise the board going forward exactly what's expected of us.
So, so you're saying, just to clarify, so you're saying that we have, we've received these, these, this document.
Right.
Do we have an opportunity to comment on it to the Department of Consumer Affairs?
Yes, we do.
So if there's anything that anyone on the planning board would like to change or modify, we should make note of that and actually send that to the Department of Community Affairs. Right?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So we should adopt the resolution. We're supposed to. That's part of the requirement. So, any questions from anyone else about the resolution itself?
Just one, or one small comment. In clause three, it would be nice just to indicate that if they are to drop it in the box identified by the city seal, that it be sent to Michelle's attention or the department. Just indicate where it's supposed to go.
I think that's.
Because I know that taxes, sewer bills.
Yeah.
Everything goes in there.
Well, Michelle is on that. She's going to be checking the box. So, yeah, absolutely. Put on, if you have a comment or something that you want to submit or any documentation, you should identify who you want it to go to, you know?
Yeah.
Which would, yeah, makes sense.
And the other thing about that same paragraph is that having those written comments submitted by 4:00 PM on Thursday prior, that's when all of the documents go out to all the, to the planning board members. So it seems as though that might be a little, that doesn't give the planning office any time to really get it to us. It kind of puts them in a bind? So I'm a little surprised that it's that, that it's that down to the wire.
Okay.
So I'm, because I'm assuming.
We can, yeah, I mean, in, in, in practice, if that doesn't work, then we can revise it for a a period of time sooner than that before, more distance between the date of the meeting and the deadline for that sort of thing. Okay. I'll, I'll call a roll again. We need, we need a motion and a second.
This is mic submuted.
Yvonne Clayton, second.
All right, bear with me. I'm not used to being the secretary, so I'm, I'm trying my best. Okay. The roll call on this, Mayor Moore?
Yeah, and I apologize. I should have brought this up during the conversation. This was presented to the council last week, the same thing. This is by the Division of Local Government Services. And I know the League of Municipalities is against it. I know the City Management Association is against it. I know planning board people are against it. To me, this is very much overstepping their logic. So I mean, I know we have to pass it, but my vote is no.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
Yes.
Michael Manzella.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
I abstain.
Okay. Eric Galipo.
Yes.
Rick Lambert.
Yes.
Barbara Kuzak.
I, I vote yes only because we have to at this point. But I would like to submit comments regarding the, the written public, that rewritten public comments have to be read and received. And they have, we'd have to determine if they're duplicative. I'm struggling with that. But, but yes, for the passage of this, yes.
Okay. It's passed. Resolution approved.
So how do we, so do we just send something to you, Jack, to say, all right, these are the issues that I have?
Yeah, send it to me. We'll put it in because I have, I have a lot of comments. I, I believe it's definitely ultra virus and against the law.
Okay.
It flies in face of the municipal land use law and everything I know about zoning and planning regarding the conduct of a here that I've dealt with for the last 42 years of practice. So I think, I think it needs clarification and move on from there.
Right. But this is, but this is, this is through 2020. This is not 2021.
Not yet. I mean, if, if, once it's, they're finished with their commentary, if they make no changes, it could go into 2021, but I imagine there's going to be a slew of lawsuits. Because I don't know of any board attorney I've called in the last week trying to figure out this whole thing that agrees with any of it in terms of how it applies to boards. So I imagine there's going to be some lawsuits. And like you said, the league, like Mayor said, the League of Municipalities, I'm sure Board of Directors meeting of the land use section of the bar, there's going to be some strong comments. I have to believe they made a series of mistakes that they weren't thinking. I don't, I don't know. I can't, I can't believe they would say things intentionally the way they did because it just doesn't make any sense. So, and it violates the statutes. So, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll deal with it the best we can. We'll wait till it all sorts itself out and whatever the end result is, we'll either, we'll abide by or we'll wind up in a lawsuit over it.
Okay. So, so basically at the, at the next meeting that we have at the planning board and every meeting after that, we, we, we can accept written comments up until 4:00 PM of the Thursday prior.
Correct.
If someone cannot attend the meeting.
Right. I am still going to make everyone's, anybody that's testifying before a board on an application or in connection with what we do, the law requires us, the MLUO requires all witnesses to be under oath, no different than a court of law, and be subject to cross-examination.
Yep.
Somebody's going to make a comment. That's fine. I get that. But I'm going to make sure they're sworn in. There's other provisions in there about audio and video that don't make any sense. So, I mean, if there, we have plenty of members of the public and that participate in our meetings and they, they, they are, they participate in telephone connections as opposed to telephone and audio. And there's no way I'm going to tell the board to deny them access to a meeting of comments and questions just because they have a telephone and they don't have a computer versus having a computer and/or a telephone so they can get both. So there's just, there's just a lot of inconsistencies in the law that would cut off, one, for example, I just explained, would cut off the right of the public. And that, that would definitely deny them their due process and their right to comment on these applications. So, you know, we'll sort it out and get answers and move. Once we figure it all out, we'll implement it the best we can.
Okay. Our next, our next item is up for a motion for, as everyone knows, that Irene is, is out for some period of time, that she will be back. But we need to appoint Michelle Alonso as a temporary board secretary. So I'm, I believe that all we need is a motion in order for us to.
Yeah, we got a motion and a second, and I can do that by voice vote. It's, it's a temporary appointment. My understanding is that Irene is coming back to work in the city in February.
Yes.
Jim Henry, Jack.
Yes.
Jack, I've got a question. Do we have to put in a timeframe on this temporary appointment?
Yeah, 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 I would say so. Yeah, until Irene's return, as I imagine. I know that Irene is planning on coming back in February.
All right. So then, so then I would said, so then I would request that you make it up until March.
Okay. Or when, or.
When she returns.
If Irene ever comes back sooner than until Irene's, yeah, yeah, honor before March, right.
Thank you.
So who, I need a motion, please.
My motion approved.
Second?
Mike Manzella.
Okay. Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
Yes.
Michael Manzella.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Jennifer Souter. Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Eric Galipo.
Yes.
Rick Lambert.
Yes.
And Barbara Kuzak.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Okay, we're up to our applications at this point. We have two items that are up for discussion today, both having to do with Asbury Partners. Our first item has to do with a public inquiry regarding a conflict.
Barbara, at this point, I need to recuse myself.
Yes.
Jim Henry. So Jim Henry is off.
Actually, Jim Henry will just go into the public. We can technically do that? I don't know.
Yes, he would do that. So our eligible members are Rick Lambert, Michael Manzella, Barbara Kuzak, Alexis Taylor, Yvonne Clayton. John Moore and Eric Galipo can participate in the discussion, but he cannot vote on the matter because he hasn't listened to all the transcripts. So he can, he can participate in discussions and then.
All right. You want to, you want to frame this up for us, Jack?
Yeah, we recently received an inquiry from, hold on, let me get, let me get my paperwork. So I'm not trying to do this from memory. We recently received an inquiry or a claim, a letter, written letter from the members of Save Asbury's Waterfront, who happened to be represented by Mr. Lieberman. And it's a claim of, what I believe to be a claim of a conflict of interest of our planner, CCH, having conflict of interest with the applicant based on their relationship or former relationship with the applicant. So in my discussions prior to this evening, I spoke to all council involved that have an interest in this. Mr. Lieberman, who represents the objectors and the author of this letter. Mr. Powers, who represents CCH in this matter. And Jennifer Smith, who represents the applicant. My recommendation is that we take it in the order that I would of any, any type of hearing. Have Mr. Lieberman tell us what his position is on this. A response by Mr. Powers on behalf of CCH. And then we should hear from the applicant to hear their part of it thereafter. Based on what we hear, I'd like the board to deliberate, discuss this amongst themselves and come to a conclusion as to what we should do going forward. So with that, why don't we have Mr. Lieberman present his position on this issue?
Thank you very much, Mr. Sarfago. Can you hear me? Can I hear you? Good, okay. You never know. Well, good evening, everybody. I'm Stuart Lieberman, and I am counsel for Save Asbury Park's Waterfront and for the author of this letter in part of this application. Can I ask first why Mr. Henry is recusing himself? Is there, is he going to state a reason or?
He's recused himself from the entire application.
Okay, thank you. So this is the issue in a nutshell. The municipal planner, CCH, according to a letter dated October 16, 2020, from their lawyer, was retained by, let me get the, by Oceanfront Acquisitions, which was a partner, a former partner to Asbury Partners, a predecessor in this application to I-STAR. And we received some documents that indicate what the scope of work was for CCH. And I would refer specifically to two pages that we received. And I guess they came from Mr. Powers. I'm not sure, but.
Excuse me, Mr. Lieberman, for interrupting. Let's make sure that your packet of paperwork is in the record. I believe it was an exhibit. If APP can unmute themselves and let me know that to be a fact. I want to make sure your position.
Yeah, I'll pull it up here. Hold on.
Okay, along with, and then, and then Mr. Powers' position papers are in the record for both, for both of you. Okay. Yeah, okay, that, is that, that's, that's, I believe, Mr. Lieberman, is your, the submission that your client sent in?
That is the submission they, they sent in. And what I'm referring to is two papers that we received, I believe, from Mr. Powers, that referring, that are dated September 24, 2001, appearing to be two pages of the contract with CCH. Do you have that there? Yeah, yeah, keep going. It's the next one probably. Yes. So this was, I believe, provided by Mr. Powers. And I would request that the board hold off and not take any action until it receives all 12 pages. This is out of context. It's very hard to understand the full context. But apparently, this was the scope of work for CCH. And reading it makes it clear that this, that CCH was acting on behalf, not of the City of Asbury Park, but on behalf of the developer. First of all, the scope of work is from the developer, not Asbury Park. On page six, it provides that the, that the prime objective of developing the master plan with input from city officials is to build support for passage of the revised redevelopment plan by city council. So CCH was being hired as a planner, but in an advocacy role, to assist in an effort to gain support for redevelopment of its plan that it was developing by the city. This was work being done clearly for the developer. And it was the intent that as the applicant, the developer would secure approval from Asbury Park. And, and CCH was part of that. They were part of the adversary, excuse me, of the attempt to gain this authority. You look at the last paragraph of page six, it says, "The consultant team of which CCH was part will prepare a draft of the developer's redevelopment plan for review and comment on the city administration and interested private parties." So the city and private parties were the entities for whom the developer was planning to prepare this and gain their public approval. CCH was part of the team doing this. These aren't my words. These are words in the contract that CCH entered into. On page seven, the next paragraph says, "After receiving review comments, the consultant shall revise the redevelopment plan and graphics as approved by the developer and assist with scheduling a hearing with Asbury Park Planning Board." So CCH was going to prepare the graphics. They were going to prepare the presentation. And they were doing so with the hope of gaining approval from this body, this very body. Because of course, the planning board needs to approve the redevelopment plan or needed to before the governing body. In this paragraph, "The consultant team shall present the proposed revised redevelopment plan to the planning board at the public hearing and answer questions." So CCH wasn't here on behalf of the city. CCH wasn't here on behalf of the planning board. CCH was here as part of the developer's team, ready to answer questions by you, by this very body, with the hope of gaining approval of the plans that CCH wrote. The problem with this is that CCH has an unwavable conflict. CCH represented the applicant. And now CCH is representing the planning board or is doing work for the planning on the very same redevelopment plan. It's not even remote. It's the exact same redevelopment plan. And here you have them acting, giving guidance to the planning board, giving, interpreting documents that they wrote. And you can't serve more than one master. Their first master and the one that they are required to, to, to ensure the interest is satisfied and fully met is the developer. Now, one could say it's remote because I-STAR is now the developer they took over the project. But it's not remote because it's the exact same project. And I-STAR stepped in the shoes of the developer because they went bankrupt. Now, if there's any question about that, you will note that the applicant stands by the CAFRA permit that Asbury Partners got. They're not saying, oh, that doesn't apply to us because we're not the same entity. They say that applies to us because we are the same entity. And so you can't have it both ways. You're either the same entity, you gain benefit from all of the prior approvals and from the CAFRA permit and all of that work, which is what they are, and they were part of it, they were part of the team, or you're not. And if they want to go and say that that CAFRA permit is still valid, then they do step fully in the shoes of the entity that obtained it, the entity that hired them to do this work, and they have a conflict. And this entire hearing needs to be determined nullity. It's null and void because it's been irreparably tainted. There have been interpretations of the ordinances that have been undertaken by the planner most recently that concerning the facade and whether or not the boardwalk portion of the property is a front entrance. I will note that in my humble opinion, the planner's position lacked no legal basis whatsoever. It was that the front, that the boardwalk side of the project wasn't a front facade, even though when you read the ordinance, it clearly is. And when asked for explanation, it was just, that's the way she interpreted it. That's clearly not fair guidance, but that's not the point right now. There have been other questions about whether off-site parking is required. This hearing has been tainted from the very beginning by the presence of a consultant who never should have sat on the dais. They should have recused themselves. And I will note that in conclusion, note that NJAC 7, excuse me, wrong. Seven is environmental, and that's what I do during the day. NJAC 13:41-2.1, and I'll repeat it. NJAC 13:41-2.1 applies to planners. And it provides that a planner should not render professional services or contracting to render services where the licensee's ability to faithfully and objectively serve the client is materially compromised by other personal, professional, or financial interests and responsibilities. And here it is. They are, CCH is interpreting its own words and can't ignore the fact that it wrote this project. It undertook this project as part of a team hired by this applicant. It owes its obligation to this applicant. It wrote this for the applicant. It did not write it for the city. If you read the contract, its entire objective was to get this approved by the city. That's like saying that if I get a permit, a CAFRA permit approved by the DEP, I work for the DEP. That's not true. I work for my client, and it's a DEP permit. Read the contract. They did this for the applicant. And part of their assignment was to get this approved by the planning board, this board, and then the governing body. It's a complete conflict of interest. And in so doing, they have unfortunately spoiled this hearing. The hearing has to be deemed a nullity. There's no way to surgically repair what has occurred. And therefore, we respectfully request that this application be dismissed and that another planner be retained by the municipality in order to address this. Thank you for your courtesy and your patience.
Mr. Powers?
That's a hard act to follow, but just let me say this. Mr. Lieberman has not identified a conflict of interest. What is a conflict of interest? I mean, that's the first inquiry. What's a conflict? So it's just because somebody had a prior relationship with a prior developer for this project doesn't mean that there's a conflict. A conflict of interest is defined as a situation in which a person is in a position to derive a. a personal benefit from actions or decisions made in their official capacity. Mr. Lieberman, what is the personal benefit from actions or decisions made by CCH which they will derive from the applicant here? Identify it, please.
Mr. Powers, I'm not engaging in colloquy with you. I've made my argument and I rest.
Well, there's a good reason why you don't have an answer to that. There's no conflict and I'll tell you why. This this by way of background, that first of all, if you look at the letter that Mr. Lieberman's client sent, the letter doesn't identify a conflict of interest. There's a good reason for that because there isn't one. Apparently, the app, the the source problem here is that they heard an opinion from Donna Miller regarding the 2002 waterfront development plan that they don't like. Well, let's look at the 2002 waterfront development plan. It was a development plan that was prepared by Clark Caden Hints for Oceanfront Acquisitions. It was reviewed by the city of Asbury Park. It was actually in the first instance, it was reviewed by the planning board. Planning board approved it. In the second instance, it was approved by the city council. City council approved it. In both instances, it was approved, subject to extensive public comment. So it's not like nobody had a chance to comment on this. The fact that, you know, Mr. Lieberman raises the fact that Donna Miller is being asked to review a plan that was prepared by her office. Well, it should come as no surprise to anyone who knows anything about planning, and I know Mr. Lieberman does, that planners are frequently called upon to interpret documents that they themselves wrote. I mean, the the planner, for example, the planner in my hometown of Bridgewater, Scarlett Doyle, she's probably written, trying to, I don't want to say how old she is, but she probably written at least six master plans. And we know how often they come up. And she sits on the dais at board of adjustment meetings and planning board meetings and is frequently called upon to interpret the meaning of documents that she wrote. That's what planners do. It's not a conflict to interpret a document that you wrote. So let's let's turn to the allegations of conflict here and a little bit of the history because I'll give you a little bit of the history so that you understand how we came to be in the situation that we're in here. You know, Save Asbury, Save Asbury's waterfront contends that they have that Clark Caden Hints has a conflict just because they prepared the plan and and because they're asked to interpret it for Asbury Partners, the current applicant. We're not being asked to interpret it for the current applicant. You're being asked to interpret it the city of Asbury Park. That's who they work for now. If we go back through the midst of time, 2002, when the waterfront was, a developed waterfront was just a glint in some developer's eye, the city of Asbury Park was approached to redevelopment, to redevelop the waterfront. City of Asbury Park was not in a position at the time to fund the preparation of a waterfront redevelopment plan. Perhaps in retrospect, they might have said, you know what? We'll fund the waterfront redevelopment plan and you, Mr. Developer, you can pay for it from your escrow account. That's not what happened, but the practical effect of what happened is essentially the same. So Oceanfront Acquisitions, which is a former partner in Asbury Partners LLC, an entity that was later required by Istar, which is now the majority owner of the applicant, they they undertook to have the plan prepared by Clark Caden Hints. Was it prepared so that the waterfront redevelopment could proceed? Of course it was. That was the person, purpose of the plan. Was the plan approved by the city? Yes. Was it approved by the board of adjustment? Yes. Was there public comment on it? Was there input on it? Yes. That's what Clark Caden Hints is being asked to examine now. If you look at the cover page to the contract that Mr. Lieberman referred to before, you'll see that Clark Caden Hints' business relationship was with an entity called Oceanfront Acquisitions. I know you can ask him because he's on here tonight, Michael Sullivan, he'll tell you that Clark Caden Hints had done no business with Oceanfront Acquisitions since 2009. And that's because Oceanfront Acquisitions lost the property in foreclosure to Istar. So if you look at some of the documents that I provide, I think I provided a couple of
Excuse me for interrupting. AP TV, can you put those documents up? So that anybody wanting to see them has an opportunity to look at them?
Yeah, not not that one, but there was that one, for example. That's a document from Istar that basically indicates, and you'll let me turn to it here, that Istar's entry into Asbury Park can be traced back to 2006, when they served as the financial lender to Asbury Partners, the designated master developer for Asbury Park. You look at this, it says, "In 2009, due to a downturn in the economy, Asbury Partners was quote unquote, struggling to meet its commitments. It couldn't pay its, it could not pay the mortgage payments on, I believe it was, $70 million loan." So Istar booked the project back, put it in foreclosure, and project went into foreclosure and nobody bid on it. So Istar was left with, apparently at the time was, a white elephant. Istar decided in its infinite wisdom to move forward. And in 2009, I think there's a second article, if you want to turn to it, it's a New York Times article. Actually, no, there was a second, a second document from, there you go. That's from 2009, which indicates that the financiers have taken over the company that is developing the city's waterfront. No one bid on the ownership interest of Asbury Partners on Tuesday, leaving Istar Financial to take over. Asbury Partners owed Istar Financial $70 million that it couldn't pay. So now Istar is left with an unperforming asset that it has to turn into money to recoup the money that it loans to to Oceanfront Development. And basically, they took the project back in foreclosure. Mr. Lieberman's trying to say that Istar, the Istar today is the same Oceanfront Develop, Oceanfront Acquisitions that Clark Caden Hints entered into contract with back in 2002. And frankly, nothing could be farther from the truth. Bottom line is that in in this particular instance, just like when the bank forecloses on any other property, it's like with a bank forecloses on a house that has a residential mortgage, it takes it takes the house back and the house has the same address, but the bank doesn't become the people who owned the house. That's the exact same situation here. The Asbury Partners is not Oceanfront Development. Asbury Partners is not Asbury Partners LLC. Technically, is it the same legal entity? Yes, but it's it's not the same ownership. It's it's completely different. So now you have to look at Title 13, which Mr. Lieberman also discussed with us before about the enumeration of prohibited acts in the New Jersey Administrative Code, Code of Professional Conducts for Planners. He said that the first item says that it's 13:41-2.1. Misconduct in the practice of professional planning shall include, but not be limited to, the following. Engaging in any activity which involves the licensee in a conflict of interest, including, but not limited to. Then there's three subsections. So let's go through them individually.
Can we bring those up, AP TV? They're in this packet.
They're in the letter. They're in the letter that I wrote. So if you, there you go. Nope, keep going. There you go. That's at the bottom of this, the page that's on the right. Number one, engaging in profess, I'm sorry, rendering professional services or contracting to render such services where the licensee's ability to faithfully and objectively serve the client is material compromised, materially compromised by other personal, professional, or financial interests or responsibilities. Well, first thing, this board certainly would know if they, and would be able to tell you whether or not they feel that their that their planner is favoring the applicant here. I suspect even more so that if you ask Ms. Smith whether or not she feels that her client is getting, you know, special handling from Clark Caden Hints, I'm reasonably certain her answer would be a resounding no. So now you have to look at, is there any, is there any personal, professional, or financial interest or responsibility which might affect Clark Caden Hints here? We look at subsection two, says, well, a licensee or any firm with which the licensee is associated is acting as a member, advisor, employee, or consultant to a governmental body or agency, undertaking work for private clients where such work will be submitted to the government body or agency for review or approval. That's not the case here. Clark Caden Hints is working for the city of Asbury Park. They're not working for Asbury Partners. They're and they're, they are serving as an advisor to the city, but they're not undertaking work for any private client who has an involvement with this project. They're working for the city and members of the board, you know, they're working for the city. You know, they're working for you. They have worked for you for an extended period of time. Last but not least, and this is the one where I think it's eminently clear, if you read this, that there's no conflict. While acting as a member, advisor, employer, consultant to a government body or agency, participating in the review, approval, or recommendation for approval of plan specifications or other professional work submitted on behalf of any individual or entity with whom the licensee or any firm with which the licensee is associated possesses any continuing or anticipated professional or financial relationship. So the question here is, is there a continuing or anticipate professional or financial relationship between Clark Caden Hints and Asbury Partners? Clark Caden Hints hasn't worked for Oceanfront Development since 2009. They're not working for them now. And you can ask Michael Sullivan, they, I'm sure they'll tell you, they don't anticipate working for them in the future. There's, there's no pecuniary benefit accruing to my client here. You know, the the particular section of the administrative code that I read to you doesn't say anything about a past relationship. And the reason for that is because you can't obtain any pecuniary benefit by help, helping someone you don't work for anymore. I mean, the last time Clark Caden Hints had a relationship with any entity that's even remotely connected to this application was 11 years ago and that and that relationship has ended. So again, if you go back and you take a look at the definition of a conflict of interest, it's a conflict is the situation in which a person is in a position to derive personal benefit from actions or decisions made in their official capacity. That is your inquiry tonight. You have to ask yourself, is Clark Caden Hints in a position to derive any personal benefit from their actions or decisions made as your planner? Is there any way that they can monetize that? Turn Donna Miller's decisions into money from Clark Caden Hints? And the clear answer to that is no. And by the way, Donna Miller gives advice. She doesn't make decisions for the board. I've served as the planning board attorney for multiple municipalities. I served as a planning board attorney for the, for Borough of Garwood and for Hopewell Borough. And I know one thing that I reminded all of our professionals about and which I was reminded about on numerous occasions from members of of the planning board or board of adjustment, that I'm an advice giver, I'm not a decider. So here, in the, in the event that Donna Miller makes a recommendation or gives an interpretation regarding a plan that was written by her office, something which she should do, by the way, that's what you pay her for, it's only advice and the board can choose to accept it or reject it. And if you feel like you're not getting proper advice from Clark Caden Hints, which I strongly doubt is the case, you can reject that advice. But again, you have to look at what is the benefit to be derived by Clark Caden Hints present or going forward from making decisions in their official capacity regarding a plan that they wrote in 2002? There's, there's absolutely no conflict here. I mean, frankly, I think it's frivolous and I think if I represented objectors in a case like this, I would tell my clients that I could not in good conscience and in good faith, make the argument that Mr. Lieberman made here tonight. It's not a fair argument. It's not a proper argument and it has no basis in the law. That's my story and I'm sticking to it.
Okay.
May I reply, please?
Sure.
Thank you, I appreciate it. The, there are just a few issues I want to hit on in reply. First of all, I do think we need the full contract. I think it's unfair that we were provided with two pages. This is a scope of work issue. This concerns, at least in part, what Clark, what CCH was hired to do. And mysteriously, for whatever reason, we get two pages. We should see everything and I would request that no action be taken until we receive the full document. I think it's very important. Number two, the, the, the comment by Mr. Powers that he has seen planners interpret their own work product frequently, I'm sure that's true. That he's never seen, I suspect, and I don't think anybody here has ever seen, a situation where a planner is called upon to interpret work that they undertook for the applicant. That's different and that's the problem. Therein lies the problem. This wasn't work that they did on behalf of the city. Then there wouldn't be a problem. This was work they did for the applicant. And that's the problem. And that he hasn't seen before and that you, nobody's seen before. And that's why this is unique and that's why this is a problem. The 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 regulation that we cited, NJAC's 13:41-2.1, that Mr. Powers talked about and that I talked about, what it says is that a planner must not engage in misconduct, which in, which includes a conflict of interest, quote, including but not limited to, and then it gives the three examples. So those are three examples of a conflict. They are not intended to be an exhaustive list. And I think it's because nobody envisioned that you would have a planner doing work for the applicant and then testifying for the city on that same plan. That's unheard of. It's really truly unheard of and that's the problem. So the conflict is, first of all, we don't know what that relationship was through 2009 and I think we should get some clarity on it, by the way. We should understand what work was done for whom and who was the client as that was going on because the client's morphed, apparently. And I think that's actually fairly interesting information. But the big story on Action News tonight is simple. It is undisputable, it is indisputable, rather, that this planner wrote this plan, this redevelopment plan for what is now the applicant. And in fact, Mr. Powers admitted, they really are the same entity. He says it's made up of different people, but it's the same entity. He said that. That's in law, that's the same. In law, whether, whether, when shareholders change, when officers change, if the entity is the same, it's the same. And and that's, there's your problem. This is tainted. It was improper. They shouldn't have done it. They should have known better. And it shouldn't have been up to my clients to have to figure this out. This, this needs to be dismissed and we need a fair shake to this. Thank you very much for your courtesy and thank you for letting me do a reply. I appreciate it.
Because I like to respond to that. That Mr. Lieberman can't point to a single administrative regulation that prohibits Clark Caden Hints from interpreting a plan that they wrote for this developer, even if, even if they wrote it for this specific developer in 2002. And the reason for that is because there is none. Every example provided by Mr. Lieberman implicates some pecuniary benefit to the professional. There'd have to be some pecuniary benefit to Clark Caden Hints. You gotta ask yourself, what pecuniary benefit does Clark Caden Hints get from interpreting a plan that that they wrote and frankly, that they're in the best position to interpret? None. And the bottom line is, if they give, if they make an interpretation that the board's not satisfied with, that the board thinks for a moment isn't a proper interpretation, they they have every right to not accept it. Like I said, Donna Miller is a plan they, they have every right to not accept it. Like I said, Donna Miller is a planner. She's not a decider. The members of the board are the deciders. And the members of the board will have to decide this issue tonight and determine for themselves whether they want to remove a planner that served them faithfully over an extended period of time because Mr. Lieberman's client heard a couple of decisions from the planner that they didn't like. Because let's face it, that's what this is all about. Has nothing to do with a conflict, has nothing to do with prior relationships, and has nothing to do with any violation of Title 13 of the Administrative Code. They heard Donna Miller say a few things they don't like, and, and that's why they, they presented this purported conflict. What's a conflict? Again, I told you that conflict is an instance where a person in their official capacity derives a personal benefit from their actions or decisions, that there's some pecuniary benefit to them, and that just, it doesn't exist here.
I think we should hear from Ms. Smith.
Yes, thank you. For the record, this is Jennifer Phillips Smith, and I'm here on behalf of Asbury Partners LLC. I'll start with some of the facts. CCH does not have any continuing or anticipated professional or financial gain from this site plan application. And I think we need to focus on what we are here for. This is a site plan application. We are seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval from this board for a specific plan, for, for a specific property, for a specific use. What has been alleged is that 19 years ago, Asbury Partners, or perhaps not even Asbury Partners, the contract shows its oceanfront acquisition, hired CCH to help in drafting a law, a law that was ultimately adopted by the city council through the municipal land use and local redevelopment law process. For this application, CCH has not been retained by Asbury Partners. And in fact, since the change in ownership in Asbury Partners, CCH has not done any work for Asbury Partners. That's where the 2009 date lines up. As you all are, are well aware, the business professionals associated with Asbury Partners right now were not involved in oceanfront acquisitions, and were not part of the history of the adoption of this redevelopment plan law that was adopted back in 2002. As Mr. Powers said, a conflict is a conflict if it violates the administrative code. It's not a conflict just because someone may look to other standards such as conflicts for attorneys or conflicts for engineers. We have to look at what the conflict standards are for planners. And I think it is very interesting and dispositive here that the conflict rules for planners state that you need to have a continuing or anticipated professional or financial relationship. That doesn't exist. And it's undisputed that it hasn't existed for at least 11 years, if not more. So we, we strongly support Mr. Powers here in that there isn't a conflict. But I would like to go a step further. Mr. Lieberman has said there's a conflict, and therefore this whole process is tainted. That seems to be something that's coming late in the game here and doesn't have any support. There's been no case law cited for any proposition that even if there were conflict, which there isn't, that this process has been tainted. As been said before, Ms. Miller is here to give advice. CCH is here to give advice. They don't determine what constitutes a waiver. This board does. And you will ultimately determine if we have met the standards in our application that we've put before you. So without that kind of case law, it is draconian to suggest that after all of these hearings, and I think we're on hearing number 12, I'm starting to lose count, that all of the public that spoke at all of those meetings should all be erased so that we could start over again with a new planner. That's draconian. And there's nothing Mr. Lieberman has cited to even remotely suggest that that would be the appropriate remedy here. So again, I haven't seen any evidence of the fact that CCH is materially compromised, or that they have any continuing financial gain from this project, certainly not from a contract that was signed 19 years ago. And I haven't seen any case law to suggest that even if there were a conflict, that starting over is the appropriate remedy.
Okay. Um, that's it, uh, for the board to consider. Um, I will, I have my own opinion on the matters, but I'll wait for you to voice your, your positions on this. If you have any questions of me, ask me, and then I can tell you what I think, uh, could be appropriate remedy under the circumstances or recommendations for the board. So if the board would like to have any questions or discussions with anyone, please do so now or amongst yourselves.
Does anyone from the board have anything that they would like to bring up or question any of the, the attorneys or Jack?
Uh, this is Mike. I guess, Jack, I, I guess I would like to hear your opinion first, because I feel as though, you know, some kind of impartial counsel, and you're our counsel, is kind of needed here. Um, you know, you have two sides of the coin, and the applicant providing a legal opinion. And, and I, I think we need to hear from you as well. That's just my opinion.
Okay.
Um, I, I tend to, I tend to agree with, with Mike as well, because, um, I, I've heard, I've heard everything that, that's been said by, um, counsel. And I would be, uh, you know, let's face it, that we are not planning board attorneys.
Right.
So we look to you, Jack, to, to help us out here in some thoughts, based on what you've heard.
Okay.
And what you've seen.
Okay. Anyone else? Well, okay. Um, my analysis of the situation, based on, on the code, uh, for that applies to planners, there's no apparent conflict, okay, based on the pure reading of the code. I can understand the argument, uh, that Mr. Lieberman has made, that it's the same entity regardless of how remote the, uh, membership is, and how many times this thing has changed, and the fact that this has gone through a foreclosure, and no one that was originally involved is anywhere near this project in terms of staffing or anybody else. So I have my doubts that the conflict would be established simply because the entity, the, in and of itself, if, if it would be clear to me that if there were any folks still involved this many years later, 20 years later, uh, that, that would make a conflict. It becomes much more difficult because although in name, it's the same entity, in reality, the facts dictate otherwise in terms of factual involvement and, and, and people involvement that would present the conflict, uh, on its face to, um, uh, CCH. I don't agree with Mr. Lieberman that we should, can't dismiss the case. I believe that there's a remedy, uh, for this case. Uh, that seems to me, I always boil things down into the most simplistic of terms, because the more complicated you make something, the more befuddled it becomes. So my feeling is that although I would tend to agree with Mr. Powers and Ms. Smith, uh, if there's any doubt whatsoever in, in, in the decision, the prudent thing to do is to have conflict planner render a report on the project. I don't think that the board is naive. I don't, I think the board is astute. The board's been around. People are experienced. I don't think the board's going to be tainted by the prior report by CCH if in fact, conflict planner gives us a report. There's no doubt in my mind that the board is astute enough and knowledgeable enough not to allow anything that CCH said to interfere with its judgment based on a new report given by a conflict planner. What that would also do, in my opinion, I think that, I think that preserves the sanctity of the decision of the board, right, wrong, or indifferent, at some point. I think, I think it preserves your decision, which is also part of the process here. It's not just a matter of right or wrong, but procedurally, we want to make sure that we're correct. And whatever decision is made, we're not back for another 17 months or 16 months worth of hearings on the issue. So I think the prudent thing to do is to have conflict planners, in which case would be inside engineering, prepare a report for the project based on its current status and as it now stands, as amended, and that the board would rely on that report going forward in terms of this case. It would omit any potential conflict, in my opinion, with, uh, CCH having rendered a, a report on the file. Because I guess, again, I'll repeat myself. I do believe that the board members are astute enough and knowledgeable enough not to allow themselves to be influenced by the other report, if in fact, CCH, excuse me, insights report is different. So I think there is a remedy, uh, and I don't think you need to dismiss the case and start all over again. I, I don't think that at all. So that's, that's how I see it. Uh, and that's my recommendation to the board.
I, I would just say, I totally disagree. I, I don't think, there's no conflict. There's, it's very clear, there's no potential benefit to Clark Caden Hints. You observed astutely, I might add, that there's no violation of the administrative code. So there's no conflict. The only time you need a conflict planner is when you have a conflict, and there's no conflict here. This, your opinion is your opinion, but I strongly disagree.
That's fine.
Right. To the, to the members of the board, um, I know that, and please feel free to jump in. I know that for the past number of days that, um, I've been looking at this and trying to review it and trying to think of how planners function, how we get, how we assign planners, how we determine which planners we're going to use for what reasons, and, um, some of the criteria that we use to choose certain planners that will help us, as well as engineers or any, any other professionals that are, that we, uh, use, uh, to help us to make decisions that, that, that's really their job, is to do that for us, to help us, um, to determine that. Um, CCH has a lot of, uh, has a lot of, um, experience with what we're doing here. And we've certainly used them for, uh, for the past couple of years for a number of different projects. Um, but at the same time, I, I also, I also tend to, I understand the issues that were brought up. I am, I, I, even though I, I don't believe that there is what you might say a true conflict in, in, as, as we've heard it, I don't believe that there is, but I also do feel that it is prudent for us, for this application, to move forward with, and with a conflict planner to provide us with a report that we will be using going forward, um, on this application. And I do have confidence that our members are astute enough, and, and I believe that we have one of the strongest boards that we've ever had, as far as, uh, participation and, and, uh, knowledge. Um, I feel that, that we can, uh, we can put that to the side and go with a, a new report based on all the amendments that we've received recently, uh, and go from there. That's my opinion. I'm happy to have the discussion of anybody else on the board that feels one way or another differently, or agrees or disagrees.
Barbara, this is Mike Manzella. I agree with you, um, 100%. Um, you know, I'm a certified planner as well, and the American Institute of Certified Planners. And in our code of ethics, it talks about not only conflicts of interest, but appearances of conflicts of interest. And while by the letter of the law, this may not be a conflict, I think it's clear that there are objectors who believe it is. And I, I feel that we would be wading into shaky, uh, legal ground if we move forward with this application without, uh, another entity providing that planning testimony on this, uh, application. So I, I agree with you, Barbara.
Anyone else from the planning board care to put any, bring in their two cents or their thoughts?
And Moore. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll throw a monkey wrench into the whole thing. I'm totally confused just because I'm going to bring up the last planning board meeting where it was about zoning, it was about, uh, fences, it was about everything, and the report was written by CCH. And at the meeting, CCH was our planner. And I thought that was a definite conflict, and I was told it wasn't. So now, like, I'm being told last week, no, this week, yes. So, yes, I am confused and befuddled.
Mr. Serpico, may I ask who that was? I couldn't see from the board. I'm, I, thank you.
Mayor John Moore.
Sorry, Mr. Moore. I just couldn't see that. Mayor Moore, sorry, I couldn't see. Thank you.
No problem, sir. My, my picture's not up there.
Anybody else from the board that has any, that would like to bring forward any comments?
This is Mike Manzella. Again, another question. If we do decide to go this route as a board and, you know, ask a conflict planner to provide a report, is the intent, um, that they would provide a report on the full amount of the application, on the, on the parts that the, uh, the, the objectives have raised as issues, or?
The entire project.
Okay.
As it now stands, with the various amendments in its final edition as to what it is today. Yes, in order to do a thorough job and avoid any appearance of impropriety, you'd want a, a new report. But based on what's, you know, they don't have to go from the very beginning, each, each additional amendment. Go on what exists today and make, make, give their report to the board, and the board operates from that point forward.
Okay.
Anyone else on the, on the board that would like to voice their opinion?
I have a, so I have a question. If that is the decision we make to go forward with the conflict planner, what happens? What's the process? Do we stop tonight and wait until that conflict planner's in place?
We would stop. That, that's a good question. Um, I believe tonight you have a couple of members, a couple of witnesses that you've asked back that have testified that board members have some questions about the testimony, so get some clarification, I assume. Those folks could continue as long as we don't have to rely, if, if you, if you go in this direction, we wouldn't rely on CCH to give us any opinions on that, uh, would be more, and, and it's not even something that's necessarily opened up to cross-examination. It's just a matter of you have a couple of questions for the various witnesses, and then you can go forward. If, um, I think there's one other witness, Mr. Bowers, who's the landscape architect that might testify, but knowing that if we get a report that says something different on a landscape issue, that he would have to come back and testify to that as well. And, and at that point, uh, we would adjourn, because there's no reason to go forward until you have, with anything else on the file, until you've, on the application, until you have the planner's report in front of you, digested and circumvited, circulated to everyone, and then the various attorneys and people will, may, you know, there'll be questions to be asked at that point in time, and public comment, and things of that nature. So, uh, you know, there's no sense in doing everything twice. So you would basically move forward a little bit this evening on some other issues, but that's where you'd stop and go forward. Move it to another meeting, uh, in November, I would assume, and, uh, and at that time, have a report from conflict planner and move, move forward with the application.
Oh, one of the things that I'd like to just bring up, if I may, to the, to the planning board, uh, based on who was scheduled to present today, which, which was the landscape architect. Um, I know that there, I, I, while I, I looked at the report that CCH provided regarding some of the landscaping that was, that's out there, there's questions about, there are, there are questions about, um, I know from the engineer, they're also based on what was given to us by CCH for me. Now, I don't know if anyone has any questions that really do not hinge on the report that was given to us by CCH. Is that, is that fair to say, Jack, if nothing?
Yes. And rather than try to split hairs and decide what is and what isn't, we'll be here from nautical doomsday trying that. You're probably better off with- You're probably better off withholding the questions until you get the report. And then it may be, there may be different questions that you're going to ask of the folks that you've asked to call back, and there may be something that affects Mr. Bowers' testimony that you would have to have him retestify a second time. So if, i- if there, if the, the issues are intertwined, it doesn't make any sense then, uh, to proceed. Uh, you know, decide the issue, uh, one way or another, and then move forward. Then get a report, if, if you're going to go with the report, a second report, or a new report substituting for the old report, then by all means, uh, do that. And then we'll have to see what that report says. You know, and before we can really, before applicant present, can present witnesses, and you may have a different question or two of the people that you're asking to, uh, to have come back and clarify a couple of situations. So that would, that would be, makes sense to me. There's no sense in doing things over and over again. And there's no sense in trying to split hairs and figuring out if your question is related to, has in any way, shape, or form any relationship to the CCH report. It's just, you're just better off getting the report and starting there.
Just if I may, um, it seems the board is kind of heading towards a decision. May I ask that there be separate votes taken on the issue of whether there's a conflict, number one, and then whether nonetheless you want a, I guess, third or fourth, whatever, another opinion from another planner? Uh, that way, it's clear from the record whether there was a finding of a conflict or not.
Okay, if we're going to do it that way, then I would want, would want a, a motion to be in the form of a clear conflict or potentially a conflict, or, or as Mr. Manzella.
Either there's a conflict or not a conflict.
And Mr. Manzella's a planner, and he thinks otherwise.
Jack, I actually.
I understand your position, I understand it.
I, I did not. Yeah, yeah.
AICP doesn't say that, that an appearance of a conflict is sufficient. The, the attorneys, our, our standard of ethics used to say that. It doesn't say appearance of a conflict. The, the, the standard that is uniformly used is the one that, the, in New Jersey Administrative Code, Title 13. And the reason for that is planners work for a lot of people over their years, and there has to be some present potential pecuniary benefit to accrue to the planner. So to say that, you decide there's a conflict because there's an appearance, like some, just somebody looked at and said, you know, that doesn't right to me. There's a reason they have standards, and the standards, I think, are pretty straightforward. So I was going to miss Smith's request that there be, that somebody did that, the issue of whether or not there's actual conflict is addressed right now.
Okay.
Hi, this is Rick, I have a question. Um, can you clarify for me again what the, the initial contract relationship was that, uh, CCH worked on with, uh, oceanfront acquisitions or ocean acquisitions, whatever they were called? What was that initial?
Can I comment before you answer? We don't have that agreement, and I would request that all voting be held off until Mr. Powers provides us with the full contract and not just two pages. And then Mr. Vice Chair Lambert can get a full answer to his question. Because all we've been provided, the two pages Mr. Powers wanted to provide to us. But the scope of work, which you have marked onto, into the record, is many, many pages more than that. And I think it's very unfair that we were only given the two pages. And how can we answer Vice Chair, Vice Chair Lambert's question, or in fact, inquiries that my clients have when we haven't done that? And we're going to Oprah that anyway, but I think the board should have the benefit of that before that question is answered.
It's, it's, this is just trying to throw another stumbling block in front of the application. That the scope of the contract is not even relevant. It's not, they prepared, they prepared a redevelopment plan.
That's what, that's what I want to know. What was the redevelopment, was it the waterfront redevelopment agreement that they worked on?
Yes.
So it wasn't actually, it wasn't the beach club, any kind of affiliation with the beach club. They were doing a plan for the city.
Correct.
So I'm, I, I think planners, planning companies do that all the time. So I, I would think that this is not the only instance where a planner that works for municipality is giving, is giving advice for a plan that they worked on some many years back, a long time ago, when they were hired by a private firm to develop a plan.
I, I would tend, I would tend to agree, and as somebody who also works as a professional planner, um, although not a prof, not a PP, an AICP, um, I have, on certain occasions, ended up in front of regulatory bodies where I have advised them on their zoning ordinances, and I now represent a client in the negotiation of a development of their entitlements that result from those. It doesn't present a conflict because I don't benefit from, I just benefit from knowing the zoning or the, you know, so I, I, I do agree that there can be situ, if there was some benefit to accrue to me as a result of that, it would be a conflict, but.
And I don't see that, again, a conflict of interest would be some kind of pecuniary benefit. And I don't see that CCH gets any benefit from giving us advice on an application that occurs within the waterfront redevelopment plan that they helped write however many years ago.
And I also think that the, there, the point has been made in, by multiple of the entities here this evening, that the members of the, the corporate entities that were party to that redevelopment agreement are now different entities. And only through the financial intricacies of the bankruptcy and the assumption of the agreement is it I-STAR here, and they have no relationship to the pre, to the initial determination of the, of the plan itself.
And that's the other thing too, is that, you know, that it was raised that, well, it's possible there's going to be an appearance of a conflict. Well, still, you have to look at what a conflict of interest is. Is there an appearance that CCH is in a position to derive a personal benefit from their actions, their decisions made in their official capacity as the planner to the planning board? I think the clear answer to that question is no. There's, so, you know, it, it doesn't even appear that there's going to be some personal benefit to them. There's no actual personal benefit, and there's, there's no argument that could be made that, that it appears that they're deriving a benefit.
Yeah, I would agree. I don't even see that there's an appearance of, of a conflict. I mean, one is, I, I, I thought maybe if the, you know, 19 years ago, CCH had worked on a plan to develop a, a beach club, and they were the planning firm that developed the beach club, and then now they're trying to, the, you know, the entity is trying to get it passed, that that might be considered a conflict. But does that, we're not even talking, we're talking about apples and oranges. One is a redevelopment plan for the city, and the other's an application for a specific site. It's not even the same thing. So I don't know how that's even considered an, uh, an appearance of a conflict.
And Philip Smith is also.
I can't have a free-for-all timeout, timeout.
We don't know that.
Let me, hold on, Stuart, we'll get to you, we'll get to you.
But I also think Ms., Ms. Phillips Smith has indicated that there is no contractual arrangement between CCH and I-STAR at this time, is that correct?
There's no contractual arrangement between CCH and Asbury Partners at this time, and no contractual relationship between CCH and the, uh, member entity, majority member entity of Asbury Partners.
And has CCH testified to that fact?
Mike Sullivan is here tonight. If you, if you unmute yourself, Mike, you can please.
I really need that. We got the representation of counsel. We accept Mr. Lieberman's representation on behalf of his folks. If you're making that representation, I don't think we need to swear in, Mr.
I, I am making that representation. I just have another observation too, is if, if you retain a conflict planner, you have to figure out who pays for that planner. I, I mean, I know if I was the applicant, I wouldn't want to pay for it. So you really, you really seriously need to consider whether or not you need a conflict planner? Because someone's going to have to pay for that, and I doubt very much it's the applicant.
I, I don't want that to be a consideration, to be, to be honest, I think.
That's, that to me is an irrelevant issue.
I mean, would, wouldn't any application that comes before us that's in the waterfront redevelopment area then be considered a conflict if we had seen CCH? What's I'm saying? So if CCH is the planner that worked on that redevelopment plan, then saying that just because they worked on a plan and something is now being given before us as, as an application, and within that, that zone or that plan is considered a conflict in anything that would come before.
That's not the claim of conflict. The claim of conflict, according to the objectors, is that the conflict arises because it's the same entity that's now the applicant that they are alleging that CCH's worked for. It's not the fact that, I don't buy.
Well, like AP Triangle, isn't that, isn't that affiliated with I-STAR?
No, it has nothing to do with I-STAR, it has to do.
I thought they did, I'm sorry.
AP.
So Asbury Partners, that's right.
And that's the claim. I'm not saying, I said before, I don't necessarily agree with that. Just because there's an LLC filed, uh, doesn't necessarily mean that there's a pure conflict because it's the same entity on paper. There's a whole lot of.
The conflict, they, under the definition of a conflict, they have an alleged one.
Right, okay, I get that, I get that, okay. I think it's, the board should deliberate and vote. And fine, we'll character, I first find a you vote and whether or not there's a, a conflict of interest. And secondarily, uh, if you vote there's no conflict of interest, then there would be no need for a secondary report.
Okay, John Moore again, uh, I disagree with the two votes. It was your recommendation to get a conflict now all of a sudden because of the applicant's attorney. Two votes, she's very smart, because if it fails 5-3, 6-2, whatever, there is no second vote. So, uh, believe me, uh, I think this is going to appeal one way or another, but it seems like we're digging ourselves a deeper hole where it's going to go to appeal a lot quicker. So again, it's going to something else we've said before, as far as like further witnesses tonight. Why the heck would I ask for somebody to testify? And I cannot ask the planner, is that good or bad? I mean, to me, that's just totally ridiculous. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, there's going to be a vote, and then I'm out. I mean, just why would we continue to have a hearing if it's going to be questionable if that hearing's legal? Somebody explain that to me, and John Moore, common sense, please.
You know, Mr. Mayor, this is Larry Powers, CCH's attorney. The, the threshold inquiry is, is there a conflict? You can't just say, it doesn't look good to me, we may take an appeal. In, in order to take an appeal, there has to be some colorable claim of a conflict. There has to be some basis in law. The law says that you have a conflict when you're in a position to derive a personal benefit from your actions or decisions. Nobody says that is happening here, no one. Mr. Lieberman doesn't even say that. Mr. Lieberman, who represents SAW, doesn't say that CCH is deriving a personal benefit. So if you take a vote on whether there's a conflict or not, based upon the legal standard as to whether or not a conflict exists, you'll solve your problem. Because if, if the board decides there's no conflict, as I submit they should, then you don't need to worry about another planner, and you can finish taking testimony tonight from anyone you want to take testimony from and use the CCH report. Because there will have been a prior determination by this board that there's no conflict, that CCH is not in a position to derive a personal benefit from their actions or decisions. I hope that was clear enough, Your Honor.
Mr. Mayor, Stuart Lieberman, uh, you know, the thing is this, the conflict couldn't be clearer. This planner did work for the applicant and is, and prepared this plan, and we don't know what else he did because we've only gotten two pages of the scope of work. We have to only imagine what's in those other pages. And I would request that they be produced so this board can see the entire record. And by virtue of them having a duty to this other client, they now have to be careful about what they do with you.
What's the duty, Stu? What's the duty?
Duty to their prior client who's here now.
They don't have, they, they have actually no duty to a prior client.
They have a professional responsibility, and they.
It's not so because you say it. It's not so because you say it. What is the personal benefit that they can gain from any action or decision they made? Personal pecuniary benefit, identify one, if you can.
The standard isn't just personal pecuniary benefit. That regulation says, read the regulation and show me where in the regulation, sir, it says that. It doesn't say it, you read the regulation, it doesn't say that.
It absolutely does. It absolutely does.
All right, that's enough. You guys have both made your point, and neither of you are going to concede to the other side. So, and I think I've given you plenty of opportunity to state your case.
Okay, John, John Moore.
How about let's hear from Ms. Smith?
Sure, I, I just wanted to clarify my last request. If the board wants to vote on whether or not there's a conflict, I think that's a, a smart vote to make, one way or the other, so it's clear for the record what your determination is. Uh, but if there's no conflict, if the board wants another opinion, even if you don't call it a conflict support, report, then the board could decide it wants another opinion from another planner without causing it a conflict.
Board's entitled to add, bring on as many support staff and reports as they feel necessary for any application, legal opinion, planning opinion, engineering opinion. You're correct.
Okay, John Moore again, and, uh, we're going deeper into the weeds, whatever. Uh, Ms. Smith, Mr. Lieberman, Mr. Powers, all did a great job for the party they represent. So I appreciate that, but the party that represents me is Mr. Serpico, and it was, it was his recommendation to the planning boards to get a second opinion. So that's where I'm putting my eggs at.
Okay, and we can still do that by having two votes, it doesn't matter. It's still, and the net result is, you could come out with the fact that you don't believe there's a conflict, but you can also come out with the fact that you think you need a second opinion. That's entirely up to you.
Well, that's a total waste, but to me, no offense, Jack, to me, that's a total waste of time and money.
Okay.
I mean, why, why would I, why would I do that? Okay, uh, no, it's not a conflict, but let's just hire somebody and spend another 10 grand and delay this another six months for the sake of like, oh, we did it. I mean, so to me, I'm sorry, it, it doesn't make common sense to me to do both at the same time. Again, just my opinion.
Let's think about this, okay? Let's take the logical steps that I, as a board attorney, also have to look at in addition to conflict, not conflict, okay? I anticipate an appeal of a case of this nature, okay? On that appeal, there will be an issue raised by Mr. Lieberman regarding this conflict, okay? I get that, okay? I don't want to go through a, a remand and another 16, 17 months worth of hearings if it can be helped. So, so the conservative, prudent approach is, okay, so you decide that, and you can, it's your call. You decide there isn't a conflict, okay? But you decide that you want to get a second opinion, and you want to rely on that second opinion. That helps your decision, the soundness of your decision on an appeal.
So you might.
May I just ask if we're characterizing it as a, as a second opinion? This is Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Um, if we're characterizing it just as a second opinion and not as a conflict attorney, I, I guess I don't understand why we have to establish if there's a conflict, if we're just saying that it's a second opinion.
I totally agree.
That's your call, that's, that's the suggestion of Ms. Smith. But it's your call if you decide that, okay, regardless of conflict or not, that's for another day, right? But we, we believe under the circumstances, we want another report. That's entirely up to you.
And I think that it should be established in requesting that other report explicitly that it's not because we determined that there was a conflict of interest, and it is not a signal that there is a conflict of interest.
You can certainly do that. That makes, that's, that's a good point.
Okay.
I, I am fine with that, I just, what I don't want to have is ambiguity as far as if you ask for a second opinion, it's because you found a conflict. I want it to be clear, if choosing to not make a finding on that.
I agree.
Then let that be clear in the record.
Yes, and I would not want my vote to represent, if we vote on this, I wouldn't want it to represent that somehow I think there is a conflict.
And this is like, just my opinion is this board should not make a determination on the record if there's a conflict or not, that's really not our, our position. It's, we need, you know.
Well, we, 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 that, we, we do have that, but I think, I think elect, and I'm sure Mr. Powers disagrees with me, but I think Alexis's approach is, is certainly fair and under the law is, is allowable. I think Alexis's approach is is certainly fair and under the law is is allowable.
I think you need to make a decision one way or another. It's really, it's a cast a cloud over my client. You know, over my, it really cast a cloud over my client. I I think that I think it's clear that nobody thinks there's a conflict. Why don't you just say that?
Because we're not representing your client. We're representing the best interests of the board.
Correct.
Oh, but the conflict was raised and by by an objector, and I'm sure the objector wants and expects an answer.
Let me let me comment. The objector believes that this is a legal issue for of which this board does not, under any circumstance, have to raise an issue. We have raised what we believe that we've raised our issue. You've raised your issue. The board is aware of it, and if the board decides to take action, that's in its response, in its purging. But it certainly does not, under any circumstance, have to render a legal opinion as to whether there's a conflict in order for it to do anything. So no, this objector, since you're telling the board what I want, what we want is, we, well, we told the board what we wanted. We wanted this dismissed. That apparently isn't going to happen. So it's up to the board if they believe any remedy is appropriate whatsoever. And if they do want conflict, another planner to look at this, that's appropriate. But I, there's no reason at all that this board has to render an opinion. One way or the other, we've advocated what we believe is correct. You, Mr. Powers, have advocated what you believe is correct. I don't think they have to do anything except for see at this point whether they want somebody else to come in. So I disagree with that completely. I really.
It just would make it more a cleaner record on appeal if they decided one way or another.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Alexis, your point's well taken. Is the board here to to make a decision as to what they want to do?
Jack, procedurally, how would this, what, I mean, is it a motion to to take?
You just take the motion in the form of what Alexis said. I couldn't write it down because I was trying to pay attention. And then and then move forward.
You said it so well, I think you should make the motion.
Yeah. I move the that a second opinion by insight engineering be provided to the board in the form of a planning memo. And in no way does this represent a decision by the board that there is a conflict, there exists a conflict of interest.
That's the motion.
Mike.
Can I get, can I ask a question? Your motion is for an opinion or is it, we're getting another planning report or is it an opinion related to the specific issues that saw us again?
Another planning report. Just as there is an engineering report, a planning report will be produced by insight.
Okay.
And that and that planning report would have to to reflect the current application as it sits today with all the amendments that were put in place.
Yeah, the current status of the. Absolutely. Any further discussion?
Yeah, question. Are we going to put some type of timeframe on this?
Yep.
I hope to be alive.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, we can discuss that afterwards. Do we have any any further discussion? Is there a second to that motion?
I second it. Mike Manzella.
Okay. Eligible members to vote on this are Mayor John Moore.
I'm sorry, can I ask another question?
Okay.
Are we hiring insight to say if there's a conflict or we hire insight to go back and look at 17 months of testimony?
No, you're hiring insight to go to what the current status is of the application. I said before, you don't have to go from start to finish. You go from what is now before the board. This application has been amended. So a lot of what went on in those first 16 months has changed. And and the application today is different from what it was when it was first submitted. So the report will be based on what is before the board now to consider and vote on only.
Okay, that's where I'm getting, I'm failing to understand where the Mr. Lieberman and his clients said they thought there was a conflict. So is that question going to be answered by the second?
No, there's one motion. The motion is by Alexis Taylor that a second opinion from a second report for the project as it currently exists by insight be be prepared and submitted to the board for consideration for this.
And an insight isn't qualified to make a decision about whether or not there is a conflict. They are qualified to produce a planning memo.
Absolutely. And that there's no finding by the board of a conflict of interest in this matter, either one way or the other. The issue is just not going to be decided by the board. The board's going to take the route of let's get a second opinion and move forward.
So again, I'm sorry to prolong this. So then Mr. Lieberman and his clients' question and concern is never going to be answered.
I think it has been answered. I think it by the action of the board, it's been answered that the board, the board sees the remedy of the issue that he's complaining about being to get a second, getting a second report.
Presuming there's a affirmative vote.
That's, well, that's the motion. I'm talking about the motion itself.
Okay, again, it's just me. I'm mixing apples and oranges. Again, I thought the letter from Saul and I thought Mr. Lieberman's objections were perfectly clear. They thought there was a conflict. So that's not going to be resolved. That we're just going to hire another planner to give us another report.
Yes.
I mean, Mayor Moore, I'll go as far to say that I think procedurally, if the issue of a conflict of interest is to be raised again, it needs to be dealt with in the court. The board can only procedurally deal with what we can determine is needed. So we don't, we don't need to determine the conflict of interest. We need to determine procedurally what makes the board in correct standing in order to review this application without prejudice.
And and further.
Nope, Alexis, I thank you for making me understand this a little bit better. And again, somebody's got to tell me before the vote, not after the vote, what's the timeframe on this?
Okay.
Estimated, I mean.
Okay, I I think timeframe would be, report would have to come in at some point prior to the meeting in November that this matter would be carried to. And I think the.
Hey, I'm good with that. As long as you say, like, again, it's in 2020 or 2021, it just looks like, I just don't want to like have this drawn out another 16 months.
No, 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 no. Well, that's what I'm trying to prevent. That's, that's, that was exactly why I took the position that I took. Okay, when I write, when I make recommendations to the board. Okay. You know, we can. No, I let's establish the timeframe now, if you like, before you vote.
Um, Jason, can we unmute Jason?
I'm here. You don't have to be under oath to answer a question about a timeframe unless there's objection from anybody.
Object.
I didn't think so. Okay, thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Okay, go ahead, Jason.
Do I need to say?
Oh, question from Barbara.
All right, the question is, is that that our next, the next time that we have a meeting scheduled for the beach club would be on on November 16th, that was the next one on the schedule. We would need this information. Somehow we're getting a little reverb here. We would need this information to the board members by the 11th of November. Is that something that's doable so that we can be here on the 16th?
Do by the 11th, I can do that.
Okay, so John, that's that's your answer, Mr. Moore.
Thank you very much.
All right, so I'll, we we have a motion and we have a second. And the roll call again, Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Gleepo is not going to vote on this. He's not eligible. Mr. Lambert?
No.
Uh, yes.
Okay. Six affirmative, one negative votes, the motion carries.
I have a question, Jack.
Yes.
But with this vote, what what does that do to my client's continued involvement with this application?
What with the application itself, I think that the the substitute planner or the the conflict planner would take over for the balance of the application. It has nothing to do with any other applications that are pending or or anticipated. We're not voting on that whatsoever. Would just be with this application.
Right, so they should wrap up whatever they have pending and send a bill for any work they've done through tonight.
Makes sense to me unless the chair has some other comments.
No.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so then, since we've made this decision, then it sounds like it's best for us not to have the landscape architect or the planner testify because it is impacted by the actual report that was given by CCH. So we're going to need a motion in order to be able to carry this application to November 16th with no further notice.
Oh, well, just before we carry the application.
Okay.
Just there's some housekeeping items I'd like to address before we carry, especially if we, if there isn't going to be more testimony this evening, I want to make sure we're using the time that we have, considering this application's gone on for so long.
Okay.
So just if you don't mind, I'll go through kind of what what I see as the next steps. We do have Mr. Bauer, who will come in and get provide landscape testimony, which is very short, it's really to confirm the changes that were made in our March and June submissions involving the removal of the vines. Then we were informed that the board had questions for our architects and our engineer, both of whom have finished their testimony, but that there were some questions. If you could point us to the areas that in which there's questions, we could be better prepared. Those individuals are on the line this evening. Now, what we don't want is to have them come back. And if there's questions and they they can't answer, we would simply be adding to the timeframe. And then I actually have one somewhat tedious housekeeping task, which I apologize in advance. Many exhibits have been loaded onto the website and numbered, but not actually read into the record. And while I know that that's tedious, it's something that I think should happen so that we identify what's been loaded on the website, make sure everyone's on the same page as to what they've been marked as. And that is something that we could do this evening rather than starting off the next hearing with that that exercise. And that's really just a housekeeping matter that I want to make sure that the recorded record matches the labeling of exhibits that are on the website.
Wouldn't we want to move them into evidence?
I I would anticipate we'd move them all into evidence at the end. We haven't actually moved any of the exhibits into evidence that have been.
How do I know what ones you've referred to and what ones you haven't?
Well, I was just going to label the ones that were sort of newly updated. There are lots of them that are up there. So there was a bit of a disconnect because the entire submissions we made from March and June of this year were all uploaded and given numbers. So there's another way you'd like to do it, we can, but I want to make sure that as we're.
Why not, Mr. Lieberman and you get together, if you can, and agree on these exhibits that you want identified for the record and 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 potentially moved in and send me a list and we'll make sure that that list is what gets ultimately moved into evidence.
We could, Mr. Lieberman, if you'd like, we can confer on that just to make sure we're working off the same exhibit numbers. I know we'd previously conferred up through, I think, exhibit A54. And then since then, anything that's been uploaded has been numbered.
That's fine. Thank you.
Then we can do that before the next hearing.
Absolutely, yeah. Send it to me. I think the two of you can at least agree on what the exhibit.
What's been numbered.
The outcome of the case is a different story, but I get that. Okay, all right.
Yes.
So we could do that.
Agreeing on admissibility, we're only agreeing on identification this time. Is that correct?
We'll do identification and then if if there's disputes about admissibility, I bring that on the record.
Okay, thank you.
And what was the first part of your comments?
The first part is that there had been a note to us that there were additional questions that the board may want to raise.
Now, how about? Why don't we get the members of the board to work with the chair, if that's okay with you, Barb, and then send me the questions and I can forward them to you. As opposed to each individual member sending you a list of questions. I can send you a whole, one, one document or one email with the list of questions that they have.
And Mr. Lieberman, do you have any objection to that?
Well, you know what I'm going to say, right?
You will be included on them.
We'll be on the CC list. That's all. Sounds like a good idea.
Yes, I don't, any objection, Ms. Smith? For that?
If Mr. Lieberman's copied, no.
Okay, then I have no problem doing it to both of you.
Thank you.
All right, here's here's one thing that that that, Jack, we might have to kind of discuss about that. Because from what I, from what I can see, that some of the items that we're going to be talking about are really based on the report that was given to us by CCH, okay? So there might be some others that other people have asked, are going to ask that have nothing to do with this report. Then I feel that those can be asked of of Ms. Smith and Mr. Lieberman, that they get copied on this. But the other ones that are coming strictly from this report, should we not wait on those until we get the report from insight? I'm just asking because I think that that's, that's where, that's where we're, we kind of have to figure that out. Because if we ask a question that is based on this report, is that fair?
Understood. I would imagine that if, when the new report is generated, we will be going through that report.
Yes.
And we will also be, I neglected to mention before, we still do have Mr. Hughes, our planner, and I will not be calling him until we get the next report because obviously there's, we want our planner to review the planning report before he testifies again.
Right, because because I've also seen that that Mr., that the landscape architect, even though he is, I know that you do have a five minute discussion there, but I also see that in the report that there's discussion about things. So that's why I hesitate.
Okay.
Yeah, so why don't we, based on that, it might be prudent to wait rather than do it and redo it and and I don't want you to have to go through it a second time.
But but I do think, but but, Jack, I do think that it's fair that if I ask the planning board members to forward me the questions that they have, if it has, if it has nothing to do with what was in this memo. And maybe they could even say it right now. Was there anything that was not in the memo that you have questions about? And, you know, you could either send it to me or we can bring them up. But if it was in the memo, I think that we have to hold off. And do it and do this.
What do you mean? What do you mean by memo? The letter from Saul?
Yeah, no, 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 I'm sorry. I'm sorry, John. I'm sorry, John, I'm talking about the the CCH report that we received based on this application. And what I'm saying is, is that that there's items in here that would be questions for the landscape architect, for the engineer and for the architect that some of our board members are bringing up as questions and they want to bring some people back. The issue is going to be is that are any of those questions have nothing to do with the CCH report? If they have nothing to do with it, we can bring those up or at least let Ms. Smith and Mr. Lieberman know what those questions are so that they are prepared.
No problem. I'll tell you, if you want them now, I mean, I had questions about A52, which has now been resubmitted as A73. And again, the only reason I'm saying that tonight, I don't know if that's to the architect or the engineer. So so I may have to like ask both of them or else. Ms. Smith, you can tell me, okay, and what A52 and A73 were, it was a rendering of the pool club looking from the ocean. pool club looking from the ocean towards Ocean Avenue. So again, you submitted in this new package, the new one, A seventy-three. So I have questions about that. Do they go to the engineer or the architect?
That's the rendering that is, uh, showing the rear fence line. Is that correct?
The fence line, uh, running parallel with the boardwalk. Correct. The east, east fence line.
Right, and what kind of questions?
You'll find out on the sixteenth.
No, no, no. Okay, okay. We, we're trying to get to a list that, so that we can, if we can.
Okay, I, 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 I have fifteen questions about it. I'm not going to go through them all tonight. Okay.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, Barbara, since we're getting another planner's report, I, I think it's best we not mix apples and oranges and just review the new report.
Do them all.
Okay.
Okay, let's do them all. Let's do them all at that point.
Jennifer, we're going to scrap that idea.
Okay, understood.
Okay.
So then, so then we know that we do have to bring the, it wasn't the engineer, it wasn't the engineer for that particular item. It was the architect, correct, Jennifer?
I'm sorry, it was.
For, it was the architect, correct? For A seventy-three?
The, the. I think Mayor Moore was asking whether it should be, the architect previously testified as to A seventy-three.
Right, okay. So that's, so we need the architect back, and I know that I had a request for the engineer to come back. Um, so those were looking to come back, and they should be fairly short on the, uh, engineering side. But, you know, uh, as Mayor Moore said, that he has a number of questions about, um, that exhibit A seventy-three, which is the view, uh, from the ocean. The, the easternmost.
The one previously marked as A fifty-two.
Correct, correct.
Right.
So do we have, uh, clarity at this point, Jack?
I think so.
Okay. All right.
Well, we have them ready to go. The exhibits will be taken care of by counsel for the applicant and the objectors so that we can have a unified list that we know what we're talking about. Obviously, they may argue about admissibility at some point. That's okay. So I think that's it.
All right, then, uh, we'd like to, go ahead.
I'm sorry. And in terms of carrying this without further notice, uh, Ms. Smith, you're going to have to consent to the extent of, extension of time from, within which for us to decide the case.
We will consent until it will be carried to November sixteenth. Is that correct?
I'm not sure.
Yes.
Okay.
It's November sixteenth. If it's November sixteenth.
Yeah.
We will consent to an extension to November sixteenth. I would ask that if you're carrying this to November sixteenth at seven PM to, and a, having it as a remote meeting, that I believe that the board secretary, uh, or AP TV, I'm not sure, has the PowerPoint with the Zoom information already listed? If someone could confirm that?
I, I can't. Maybe AP TV can.
Oh, I see the screen sharing starting. Here we go, okay. So I would just ask that if you are going to carry it to, carry this application without further notice to November sixteenth at seven PM, uh, that you also, um, read the meeting ID and password code that's on the screen for the Zoom meeting and the telephone numbers that those members, the public can hear the meeting ID for the next meeting.
So noted. You want us to read it or you want the public to pay attention to that?
I think, uh, the public that is available to see this on the screen is seeing it right now. Um, if you could please maybe read the telephone number in, the meeting ID for those who are participating by phone so that they can mark it down. I also believe that this is available or will be available on the Esri Park, uh, website for those who, um, want to look it up later.
You said, yes, that you're, you're in an area I have no clue about and, never having served as board secretary, Mr. Manzella, is that correct, that it would be on the website?
Yeah, the, the board secretary and our director of communications, uh, post the remote call-in, uh, information for every virtual meeting on the city's website, on the calendar, and also in the news section.
Okay, and I'm, uh, you're requesting me to read the meeting ID number, password, and one-tap mobile number or dial by phone by your location, which, or both?
The dial by phone, I think.
Okay, that's fine. I've just never done this before, so bear with me. If I make a mistake, you got to correct me. Meeting ID number is nine eight five four eight six zero zero three eight six. The password for the meeting is zero six one seven zero zero. The dial by phone by your location, uh, one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine. U.S., parentheses, New York, closed parentheses. One three zero one seven one five eight five nine, eight five nine two, U.S. Uh, parentheses, Germantown, G E R M A N T O W N, closed parentheses. Enter the meeting ID number, again, nine eight five four eight six zero zero three eight six.
That was very well done.
Yeah, well done, Jack.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe Irene has some competition for the job. Yeah, we'll see, yeah. Uh, with that, I think, uh,
We didn't do the motion, I don't believe.
We need the motion to carry it, yes.
Yeah, so they have a motion to carry to the next meeting on, on November sixteenth, twenty twenty, without further notice?
I can, hi Alexis Taylor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the odds have it.
Okay, um, then the next item, if no one has anything else, speak now.
No.
If not, then a motion to adjourn.
We have a second.
Second, Mike.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.
Good night.